Called the El Reno Air Park meeting to order on January 14th, 2020 at 5:30. We'll do roll call, start with Ms. Ryder.
Here.
Trustee White.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Ballmer. Trustee Cronister.
Here.
Chairman Robinson.
Here. Consent agenda, the following items are considered routine by the El Reno Air Park Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should the discussion be desired, any item, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Approval of amendments of the December 10th, 2019 regular meeting of the El Reno Air Park Authority. Number two is approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, and then June 30th, 2020. Approval of claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning December 1st, 2019, and then December 31st, 2019.
Make a motion when approved. Second.
Motion, second. Start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballmer.
Yep.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson.
Yes. Discussion items, discussion consideration, possible action to enter into a contract for aviation fuel with ASAP Energy. Matt, do you mind explaining that to them?
Sure. So ASAP Energy is based out of Weatherford, Oklahoma. They've approached us, they've started, they've gotten into the aviation fuel business with Phillips 66. That would be the branded fuel. So what they propose to do is buy out our existing contract with Epic. We've been doing business with Epic for a while, and they're based out of, I believe, Seattle. Basically, this gives us an option to deal with a local company that has a presence in this area, and we've met with them a couple times, and they've got a good product.
Thank you, Matt.
What the deal was to me, I met with them, I know Rick Cook. Rick Cook, ASAP Energy, they're a big owl out west. I don't deal with him out there, but he's another guy who works in the city with my oil at the quarry. But he got into the aviation deal. The bottom line is, we're doing a lot right now at the airport. We have upgraded the hangars, we've done the roofs, we've got the project, we've just got the brand new fuel farm. My thought process was about a month ago, or sorry, about a year ago, I talked to Rick Jones, a couple of those other guys out there. We're using Epic, and Epic's like a no-name brand. We have had past trouble in the past, I say the past, probably 15 years ago, we had some water in the fuel, you know? That's why we're getting rid of that underground fuel tank and going to the brand-new fuel system we got. So we're truly trying to kind of, you know, I guess perception becomes reality. So I really want to switch, I mean, it's no big deal, it's root, 60s, or root 66, 66, not root 66, 66, Phillips 66. The main thing is, it's a name brand that we can trust, that we can, you know, that we can basically promote, and they can help do that promotion. So we read the contracts, we had Roger read the contracts, went through their, and basically the only problem I had through the meetings is that, you know, it costs us a couple thousand dollars to get out of the contract. I don't feel like it's our duty to do that, to switch, sort of, so if they want to work through the process, we want to continue negotiations, we've already talked to them, they've already went to Phillips 66, they'll buy the existing contract out, and then they'll switch everything over. And my thought process is, when we get the new airport, Bob, you know, we'll get the new fuel system, at that point in time, we'll have a brand-new sign out there that says 66, Phillips 66, name brand, has wings on there, it's kind of trusted, we got a brand-new system that we spent, you know, several hundred thousand dollars on, so it just kind of all goes together.
You bet.
Now's the time to do it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's the reason why we kind of brought that up, negotiations, and Rick and they were just now getting into that fuel deal. We're really doing the deal with ASAP, but representative from 66, Phillips 66, came in and talked to us, and it's just a better fuel. It's just a name brand that they can stand by, they take standards. So, does that make sense?
Yep.
That's why we're doing the change. It just kind of gives us a whole new deal to basically show people that, perception-wise, that it's not the same fuel, it's not the same deal. Only process, Marsha, I think we need to make sure of, Mr. Sandage, Mr. Frazier, is when we go through the process, that the carding system, that we kind of get them, their people with our people, our people being you, Marsha, to make sure that it goes, transfers over there to the card. Because it has to go into a separate account to make sure it goes right. Does any of that make sense? Any questions? That's kind of why I was kind of stretching out there and kind of reached out to Rick. It just, to me, if we're going to do this deal and change, let's change. Let's make a whole splash, let's get a new sign out there, let's get a, let's get a name brand that everybody knows. I mean, Roger, you don't even know what Epic is, do you? Okay. You don't have an Epic credit card either, do you?
Local's good.
Local's good.
Any more discussion? Got a motion?
Make a motion when approved. Second.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Let me make a motion. I make a motion to grant authority to the mayor and/or chairman and/or city manager to negotiate the fuel contract with ASAP Energy and terminate the existing Epic fuel contract. That gives everybody authority to do what we need to do.
Got a motion, and a second. Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballmer.
Yeah.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson.
Yes. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
It's 5:35, I called the El Reno Recreational Authority regular meeting, January 14th, 2020. Roll call, we'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Cronister.
Here.
Chairman Ballmer.
Here. Consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Recreational Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the December 12th, 2019 regular meeting of the El Reno Recreational Authority. Number two, approval of a use agreement with the El Reno Softball Association for the Joe Riley Softball Fields. And number three, approval of usage agreement with El Reno Little League Baseball for the Ashbrook Little League Baseball Fields.
Matt, Jeremy, are we, I know we're going to approve these, but do we have more coming up? Because I know we've got to work on the grasscar one and the little league football, Timmy?
Yep. We're going to have little league football coming up in the next couple of months.
And we've got to do grasscar, too.
And soccer.
Okay. But don't let me forget grasscar, because they sent me a message, and we've got to make sure that we send that to them and get that on the agenda.
Yep.
Yeah, the same deal that we've done for over the years, but just so we need to make sure we do that.
The reason why we went ahead and got these on are because the seasons are coming up real quickly.
Fixing the start.
Football, we have a little bit more time, but we'll get that, get that on there, yeah.
So we don't have to renew the football one at all, do we?
We're trying to have uniform agreements, so each entity can do the same.
Okay. That's all I've got, Chairman.
Have a motion?
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, we'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman Ballmer.
Yes. The discussion items. Number four, discussion, consideration, and possible action to accept proposal for equipment to be used for project number K-14, the upgrade of the lift station used for the El Reno Lake RV Park and the Crimson Creek Estate Edition, and allow Chairman, Mayor, to sign all documents associated thereto.
Basically, what we've been working on is, we've had several meetings, Mr. Frazier, myself, Mr. Sandage, Mr. Koba, and our engineer, Steve Fox. If you recall, we did a project, which we call the band camp, and we figured that'll probably vacate it here, you know, because of the contract, Halliburton and the next contract, probably with Nexteer, I think they got another contract with the motels, hopefully, we're trying to encourage that. But what we're trying to do is, with this process, we got a lot of houses coming in back behind that area, and they put the lift station in. This upgrade will help us basically handle a lot more of the development area. We've been notified that they're going to do more area back behind there, so that'll help upgrade that whole system, and it'll help us justify all the other houses that we have in that area to do that. We have the infrastructure itself, but the motor and everything else, we have asked the developer to put some money in to the system, because there is sewer there, and they can use the sewer they have currently, it just won't be enough to upgrade for future. Well, I think we need to go ahead and make sure we have proposals, because these houses are selling around here pretty quick, you know, all the ones that we did down in West tradition, they're almost, I think they're all...
Yeah, it looks like most of them sold.
See, I had nine of them sold the other day. So, they started on that lake estates, and I know there's a lot of people very interested, those are nicer homes, they're all brick, I mean, it's a different product than what is behind Walmart, but every one of those products have absolutely found a niche and a need in El Reno, Oklahoma, that we promoted. So, what we're asking you to do is go ahead and let us, go ahead and go into the contract, go ahead and order the parts, Jeff, and everything else, is that correct? So we can go ahead and get those new pumps in there, and then once we put those pumps in there, you know, we had to replace pumps, Jeff, on all of our lift stations periodically, every four or five years, depending on what the usage are or anything else. So we had to buy these pumps anyway, does that make sense?
Right.
So if we're going to go ahead and do it, let's go ahead and upgrade, so then we're prepared for the houses, and if we start this process now, by the time the first house is turned, they can flush the toilet. That's important. I mean, it is if it's your toilet, I guess.
We're done with the other sections we have, so we can invest spare pump or...
Yeah. We always keep, we always keep the other pumps, even the ones that burned up, because we use parts off all those pumps in order to do that, because we're continuously replacing those lift stations. I think, how many lift stations do we totally have? 16? 16 total lift stations in El Reno, Oklahoma.
And the upgrade will do what's already planned, plus whatever comes.
And that will help the whole system. It's taken into effect of that area, and then the next two sections over, I say sections, the next available land, not, when I say section, it's not, Ted will think sections like 668, but, I mean, the next section of development. Does that make sense?
So looking at this, did we have two bids came in, and they were that, that different?
That much difference?
I guess, I guess I'm going to motion, we award Hays Equipment the bid for $36,500, it looks like.
That'd be a lot better bid than the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quite a bit better.
It's a lot different.
That's my motion.
Second.
Make a motion to, hey, don't make a motion, oh, hell, I'm not chairman, go ahead.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, we'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yeah.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman Ballmer.
Yes. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now it's my turn, Bob. Now 5:42, I now call the El Reno Regular Hospital Authority regular meeting of Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. To order, roll call, start with trustee Ryder.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Cronister.
Here.
Chairman White.
Yes. All right, we'll go to consent agenda, the following items will be considered routine by the El Reno Hospital Authority and be enacted with one motion. Should discussion on that item to be desired to be pulled, that item will be removed from consent agenda and considered routinely. Number one, approval of the amendments to the December 10th, 2019 regular meeting of the El Reno City Hospital Authority. Number two, approval of the amendments to the December 18th, 2019 joint meeting of the City of El Reno Hospital Authority and the El Reno City Council. And number three, approval of claims requiring trustees authorization for the period beginning December 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019.
Motion approved.
I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Yes, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I got a motion by Robinson, second by Ballmer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. It's now 5:43, I now call the El Reno Municipal Authority regular meeting of Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. To order, roll call vote start with Vice Trustee Cronister.
Here.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes. We'll move on to the new business deletions contingencies at the time, are there any? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, the following items will be considered routine by the El Reno Municipal Authority and be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes from the December 10th, 2019 regular meeting of the El Reno Municipal Authority. Number two, approval of consent assignment, assignment amended for reinstated collateral assignment for economic development agreement between Crossroads Point and Bank First, and approval of claims requiring trustees authorization for the period beginning December 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019. Roger, do you want, should we pull this number two, or does that have anything to do with anything? Okay. Okay.
I think it's fine, you've approved it previously, this is just at the higher...
Just reaffirm, okay. All right. Do I have a motion for approval of those, or anybody want to pull one?
Motion for approval.
I got a motion for approval, one through three.
Second.
Second by Ryder. Roll call vote start with Vice Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Move on to discussion, discussion, consideration, possible action to renew the employment agreement between Jeremy Frazier and the City of El Reno and the El Reno Municipal Authority. Basically, this item is put on here, the contract ends, I think, the 22nd, so I need a motion for, for us to work on a new contract.
Pardon me?
I need a motion to work on a new contract.
Okay, so moved, I'm moved to work on a new contract?
Make a motion to, to work on a new contract.
Make a motion.
I have a motion to make, to do a new contract. Do I have a second? Motion for a new contract. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? That motion dies, lack of it. We're going to item five, discussion, consideration, and possible action to award project number K-9 CBGB Drainage Phase Two from London Street to Sunset to allow Chairman and Mayor to assign, to sign all documents associated thereto.
This is an extension of our drainage work that we've done over north of Legion Park, basically. This will run from Sunset South to London, and it's basically two phases, two blocks of drainage improvements there, much needed. It'll continue, it'll, it'll give us continuous drainage improvements, basically, from, oh, I'm drawing a blank on my streets.
From Sunset all the way to London.
To London, but north of that, what we've done as a result of the storm, Sunset to Woodson.
Wilson.
Woodson, yeah.
You threw me off.
Well, it gives us a continuous drainage improvement through that area. So the, this was bid out, and the low bid for both blocks was Cimarron Construction. The base bid was $350,879.30. That was for the first block, and the second block was $272,206.60. And this, we have, tried about 105,000 of CBGB federal funds to pay for a portion of that.
And the main thing is, Jeremy, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Sandage, we wanted to kind of hold off this, Marsha, but we have to get it done. The bottom line is, we got the, because of the storm damage and everything else in between there, if you see, we've been, we've been working on Sunset, we've cleaned all that out, we've got the other off of London, it'd be Watts, Bob, so we got to continue this thing on. We did do some money checking, we've got everything else, we can fund it with what we have currently right now. We do, are expecting some money back from the storm, you know, now, don't count on that anytime soon, but we are expecting some of that back, you know, from FEMA and everything else, on the blowout we had on the side there, you know, of Reno. So, we do have money to fund it, we need to go ahead and do it. The bottom line is, it was a bigger ticket item than what we thought, but it's a major drainage issue, and we got about three more other issues, drainage issues that we're working on currently to try to get alleviated and take care of, and this will kind of help the process. Does everybody agree? I mean, okay. So I make a motion to award the project number K-9 to Cimarron Construction for the base bid in the amount of $350,879.30, and a bid addition for $272,206, and allow the chairman and mayor to sign all documents associated there with the contracts, and allow the contracts for them to get started. Because they're getting, Jeff, they're getting close to getting done on the other side. I saw they're pouring the bottom, bottom, bottom shelf, they're going to that tow wall, okay. Sounds good. That's my motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote start with trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Move on to number six, discussion, consideration, possible action to award project number K-12, an 8-inch sewer replacement between Sunset and London, and allow Chairman to sign all documents associated thereto. Basically, this is a sewer line that goes underneath there, and the low bidder was Lone Hickory. I read it, I'm just going to see where to find it now.
Mm-hmm.
Lone Hickory was...
$98,450.
Did you find it, Tracy?
$8,450.
You got it? Okay. And Lone Hickory's running.
It is.
Okay. That's what I read. So that's basically, this sewer line is to replace the line that goes in that ditch, which, or in the ditch right there that goes along there, so that'll replace that whole line. While we're there, we have to do it, if not, we're going to disturb it, it'll be, it's a clay, it's, well, that one side is clay, isn't it?
The whole side is tile, and my concern is, we're also moving to the other side of the creek, which will eliminate the creek crossings that catch a lot of debris and flood that creek up and allow it to keep it cleaner and much more flow, do a lot of that.
We're laughing about this. This is stuff that hadn't been fixed in, since the beginning, the time in El Reno. I mean, this is, your clay tile area right there, we've had some issues there, so this is one of those last areas that we're concentrating on to go ahead and get it all clear up.
Lowest lawn in El Reno.
Huh?
That's one of the lowest lawns in El Reno.
Yep. Well, that's the original township. Okay. Tracy, you want to make the motion with the mount?
Yes, I make a motion to award the contract to Lone Hickory Cattle in an amount of $98,450.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Go on to seven, discussion, consideration, possible action to accept proposal for equipment to be used for project number K-14, upgrade of lift station, Lake El Reno RV Park, Crimson Lake Estate Edition, and allow Chairman, Mayor to sign all documents associated thereto. This is per authority, in the authority.
Motion per authority.
Gotcha.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yep.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Number nine, discussion, consideration, possible action to prove the final payment in the amount of $55,954.30 to Young Contracting for project number K-03 Bridge Replacement on North Performatory Road and activate maintenance bond. Once again, this was a bridge, a wooden bridge, an old wooden bridge, that basically, I don't know, Bob, it's out past your neighbor, it's on your street, but past your house, but it's been out, we've had trouble with it over the years, we've laid asphalt in there and found out where asphalt goes down below, so it has little holes there, but we replaced that, we used a lot of that money that we had from the, we turned it into FEMA, is that correct, Jeff? And it basically destroyed that, in the floods we had this summer, so it destroyed everything else, so what we're going to do is replace that, it's replaced, we're done, we completed that whole thing with Mr. Young, is that right, Mr. Frazier? Got it all finished up, and this will, this will start his maintenance bond at this point in time. So I need someone to approve the $55,954.30 and activate, and activate the maintenance bond.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballmer.
Yes.
Trustee Cronister.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Just a joke. See if you all are paying attention. 5:53, I now call the El Reno City Council meeting, regular Tuesday, January 14th, 2020, to order. Can you please stand? And I see Reverend Colton Lott out there in the end. Would you please come out and lead us in the word of the Lord?
Would you join me, sir? Only one we could thank, that we're able to come together as a city with its leaders to make decisions pleasing to your children. As we look ahead next week to the day of celebration and remembrance of the ministry of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., may we continue to be a people searching for equality for all of your children, white and black, and every shade in between, native and immigrant, poor and rich, able and disabled. Encourage and challenge all of us to be people who advocate, fight for, and seek this equality. Ask for wisdom for these leaders as they make their choices and help create a wholeness of life for all of our citizens and residents in El Reno. May it be so.
May it be so. Join me in the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Colton, don't sit down yet, get up here. Get all feisty on me. What's going on, First Christian Church? What are you all doing?
Oh, loving and serving the Lord.
You got some good news. Anything going on?
The big one is, we, beginning soon, will be a mission station for our denomination and for other parties, and so we'll have the ability to hook volunteer groups, have
a little money come in to help do some repairs for folks in case management from the May floods in Twainos and Canadian County, and so, if you know of anybody who's been affected by the storms and they are still living through the aftermath of that, encourage them, encourage them, encourage them to go to case management. That in Oklahoma for Canadian County, for Canadian County is through Catholic Charities.
Say it again?
Catholic Charities.
I want to be, oh, no.
They're a good outfit. We trust them, and we trust the legacy of work they've done, and so please, encourage people to go to that, that is how they get in touch with groups like ours, which do volunteer labor, which have, and a little bit of funds to assist.
What's going on?
Don't ask. Don't ask.
I hurt my foot. I hurt my foot all the way here. We went down and we looked for some new businesses downtown or in Fort Worth, we have a good lead, so we're gonna get, appreciate all the work you guys do. Colton, you guys do a great job of the lunch bunch, whatever you guys do, you all have been a great partnership with Cityville Reno, I just appreciate your friendship personally, but also to the city, I always like seeing you and your representation at El Reno now, it's just nice to see everybody involved. Thank you so much for all you and your friendship here. Besides Roger, I'd get a little extra cash.
That's right. Thank you.
All right, move on to new business, the leadership continues to the end of time, are there any? If not, we'll go to consider gene, if I'm an item of consideration by the El Reno City Council, we have one motion, should discussion be decided on that item, then I'll be removed from the consent gene and considered separately. So we want approval minutes December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, regeme the El Reno City Council. Number two, approval minutes December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, joint meeting of the El Reno City Council and El Reno Hospital Authority. Number three, log donation received by the El Reno Fire Department for Marathon Oil in the amount of one thousand dollars. Approval of the consent assignment of amended resolute, why you put all these fancy words here, Roger, reinstated collateral assignment of the economic development agreement from Carthage Point, L O C to Bank Sparts. Number five, approval of the use agreement, El Reno Softball Association for the Joe Robbie Softball Fields. Number six, approval of the use agreement with the El Reno Little League Baseball for the Ashbrook Little League Baseball Fields. Number seven, log with the Oklahoma Department of Libraries, two thousand and twenty state aid grant for the El Reno Clarity Library, and number eight, approval of resolution twenty dash one zero three, a resolution adopting a supplement, number twelve, for the two thousand and fourteen code of Cityville Reno, Oklahoma dated September two thousand and nineteen. Number nine, approval budget numbers, so fiscal year of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and approval of plans requiring council authorization for the period beginning December first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Got a motion for approval of all of us, or anybody want to pull, angels, audience from one through ten?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, one through ten, is that correct?
Yep.
We got a motion. Second. Second, roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Ferrinster?
Yes. We want to eat, I just dispassion, anyone is not having an item of business to present to City Council does not appear on the agenda, please come to talk at this time, state your name, you're requested to leave your presentation in three minutes, any item being presented must pertain to the Cityville Reno and its business. Anyone? Anyone? Do you? Okay, not, we'll go on to, F, discussion consideration possible actions are new important between Jerry Fraser and Cityville Reno and the El Reno Municipal Court. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A motion to start a new contract?
Yes.
A motion to start a new contract? Go have a second. Motion, or a second? Motion second, all right, motion lacks, dies lack of the second. Move on to twelve, discussion consideration possible action to approve claim from Schwartz Paving Company for an amount of one hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight and eleven cents. Okay, before, Jeff, where are we at on the rest of these projects with them and all the rest of them? When's the next, when they, when they gonna start paving again all the different companies?
I said that with Schwartz, he's up here tomorrow, we look for them, he was on the hurry machine this afternoon, so we think they're kind of helping finish the project. His crew should be back in fact after the holidays, we look to see him here next week. And speaking this afternoon today, we'd like to sit down and meet and kind of make sure we got a good schedule for the end of where they're gonna go next, because I think they have some ideas, but they're gonna get, we want to get some of the whole projects off before we get into a big project, it's like country club.
Yeah, it's like we talked about today, I don't think we all, we all agree, I don't think we want to start off country club with, with the weather coming in, like, we're gonna do country club, and country club will be done from Alamo all the way to Sunset, off the roads, but I don't think it's wise to build those up right now and let it affect this weather, but I have had some complaints, I shared with you, I think you're gonna get on, but we had a Twenty Seventh Street is bad.
That wasn't possible.
Yes.
Yes, and I told you we're gonna do.
It's harder to do, but can we get it?
I think we're gonna try, I wish I made it, and we're gonna try to get in the move and do that area, there's some bad spots on Jensen Road, I think one by Slumber Jay, one by the railroad track.
And all that's on the list, I know it is, and people are saying, you didn't do it, yeah, we did, we had, they have, we've had different companies, different crews in here doing different jobs, it's had, because of weather and because of what they're doing, we had so much, it's taken the whole time, is that right?
It's a large, large project, and it's taking time, but they are still on the list, and we'll, we'll bring y'all back to that list, maybe to you and Mr. Fraser next week, or tomorrow, maybe we'll talk to Donald and get a better idea, but we want to knock some of those little ones like those off before we get into the Twenty Seventh Street, talk about the country club, because we don't want to tear that one open and have any kind of weather come in, we're afraid of what might we do today, and speaking with you today and Mr. Fraser, you know, we're telling, we're gonna go down for them, there's about eight little projects that were always on the list, and we're not trying to option them out first before we get into that big project, but they are definitely on the list.
Okay, all right, that's all, sorry, I didn't make a big deal, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, because I know, you, we had some people wanting to do, well, we're out of those roads, okay.
Motion approved.
I got a motion approved, pay it.
Second.
I got a motion, second, roll call vote start with Cronister. Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Upstairs. Move on to number thirteen, discussion consideration possible action to approve ordinance number ninety-two seventeen, ordinance of Cityville Reno, Oklahoma, closing and vacating it for four twenty road of Cityville Reno, Oklahoma, which is previously dedicated for the public, for the public and for public use as a street. Okay, before we do this, Roger, I don't know what the procedure is on this, but twenty-six needs to go with this too, doesn't it? After this, like?
Right after this, it's the easement, granting the easement.
Is it twenty-six?
It's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I want a presentation of the fire.
On the.
If Lizzie would do her job.
The one that says new in front of you.
I told you that after I looked at that.
The access easement's on twenty-six.
You talking about the attendant that's in front of you?
Thank you, Lizzie.
You're welcome.
The one that you had, it's right there, okay. We are correct, is that correct, twenty-six? Okay, so we'll do it, I want to do thirteen, and I think you want to do twenty-six after that, to make sense, then I'll come back to fourteen. So let's discuss, let's discuss it. Let's, this is south of the lake, right? Yeah, Matt, you pull it up, Dustin?
Pull it up.
Okay. Basically, what the deal is here, and Dustin, you're gonna help me out, I'm sure, because of the houses and the housing development that we're getting, and the area that's in there, we have to vacate that performing road, and no, Bob, it's not the performing road you live on. It's basically, the main portion is right through Lake El Reno.
Right.
Does that make sense? Now, there is a portion that goes along Mr. Wagner's land, and Ted, and, and so, in order to vacate that, we want to make sure that everybody has access to this, especially Ted, and somebody else, because at some point in time, with the new lift station, with the new water, you see in the future, Ted, that that will be developed the land, huh? Oh, Jim, well, your dad's, sorry, same thing, I keep on thinking your dad, Jim, sorry, Jim, you're, you, you, at some point in time, you'll want to develop that.
I see.
Right, I mean, you know, you're farming right now, but at some point in time, you hope, we do too. So, we have to vacate that road, so the bottom line is that the planning commission met, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and they said to go ahead and vacate it. Now, Jim, Ted's son, had some questions, and they were basically access, and then the clearance of the right of way of, of some of the easements, because there's a twenty-five foot frontage there now, is that correct? And you want a fifty?
Twenty-five is good for now.
Yep.
But at some point, I want to make sure there's a fifty foot easement for, for two lanes to get in and out, and utilities or anything else will be affected by that.
They, I know you've been working with Matt, I'm sure not here to sabotage you anything, but I had a thought process in between this and when we went over the agenda today. You know, the problem, I hear your problem, and I'm the one that sent you to Matt to work it out, but, but it's gonna be complicated to come back and move those utilities and everything else, but you want to access back there in case you need a road. Well, my, my, my proposal to you is, what would be the problem, Jim, to leave it like it is now, do the twenty-five in utilities, because we own both sides of the road, we're in the road making business, we can make a road wherever we really want to, I mean, we can dedicate it whatever else. You just need access basically to your farm, so on the other side of the miniature airport, there's a little dip down right there, and I can come straight down off that road and go along that, that section and go right into your property, that would be easier to do anything else and give you, make sure you have access to your property right now, does that make sense?
What about lotion?
Well, we talked about lotion today, they haven't petitioned us, but even on the backside of that, and we've met with another group today, that's gonna come back on the backside of this, you know, we're getting ready to open up that whole area out there, if everything goes through. So, we're trying to, we're working with Brahms now, to get this, this opened up, and we got a long process to do on this, but this will just get us through to where it gives you access that you don't have to worry about right now, but I don't, I can't have a timeline, I say aye, the city can't have a timeline to get those utilities out of the way, because the man camp will probably go away at some point in time, and we'll convert that over to an extension of our RV park is what the whole process, what our whole thought process was in the first place, we could triple the size of our RV park, and we've always talked about that, but that, that's what we wanted to do to the man camp in the first place. So once they go away, we'll have all that for our RV park, so we want to use those, move those over anyway, and we can maybe even put a road right down the middle that'll go right in the middle of your land through our land, does that make sense? There's just several options, so, I didn't know if you want to take time, we want to table this and visit about it more, but I don't really feel comfortable giving you the, I want to give you what you want, because you need it, but it wouldn't be fair to us to put a timeline on removing, removing those utilities and making that easement.
I'm not looking to try to have it removed right now, it's just if, in the future, I just want to be riding, that, that, as you're all expens, you will move them.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, but we might, but we might not, and what I'm saying is it might not, it might not fit, it might not fit the model to do that, is what I'm trying to say. You see what I'm saying? I mean, we might not need to do that, because we can make that road any way we want to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And what do you want to do? What do you feel comfortable doing?
Just so I have something where I've got a twenty-five foot easement.
Because you gotta get that, you gotta, you gotta get your tractor in there, you gotta get your combine in there.
Right now, and like I said, if it's ever developed, then I need at least fifty so I can have two lanes for pavement.
We can't land lock him anyway, can we?
Well, he's kind of land locked anyway, he's, he's land locked from I forty on one side, and then the other, the other half of your land is on the other side of I forty.
You're building a bridge from the other side.
Oh, there you go. That ain't gonna happen. I am gonna call you Ted, your dad, that ain't gonna happen. But, but what he's doing is, but, but let's go back, Jim, let me go back to my thought process, when you say, I go straight down that, that section line, and I go straight over to you, I can keep on going straight over to lotion too, all that's still on, on our land, does that make sense? So we abut him on both sides. Oh, well, I forty butted him on one side, and we butted him on, on, on the north and on the.
West.
Go outside, and then lotion abuts him on the, the east side. I just want to make sure you have access, and I, and I told, you know, when we first met, I'm with you, I don't want, I want to make sure there's any problems with you at all, I, I thought the whole thing was kind of silly, but I see what they're trying to do, they got to vacate that in order to get that access agreement, is that correct? I mean, the, help me out.
In order to get the, make the lots and develop out that west side of the property?
Yeah, the, the one they're doing right now.
Yeah.
Because they're starting phase two now. So what do you want to do? Hang on, don't leave Dustin, I'm not done with you, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you talk.
Isn't that close to what they're wanting to do?
I'm with you, I want, I want to make sure, I want to make sure you and we are comfortable together, does that make sense?
I just see exactly what they're not.
Absolutely, because.
If there's enough room for two lanes.
Yeah, because i- if I do what you're saying right now, then it kind of hinders us, because now we're held to you, and then the situation for us has changed, the man camp's moved out, they've developed those houses, we want to move that road over, we don't mind giving you access, we're all for that, because we want you to develop that land.
If it's lost, it'll probably at some point that'll be developed too.
Already talking to them, they're already talking to them now, so it's, it's headed your way, that's what we're preparing for, is that right, Colton? So Dustin, what, what's your thought process? Because you're, he's on one side, how do you feel about it? Well.
Individually, I, the, the one, the one stipulation that was made at the planning commission was absolutely that something, you know, if, if, if we approve this, and they, they recommended approval of it, with the stipulation that there being, that there being easement for access to that, as we're talking about multiple subdivisions, multiple, you know, potential development and bringing all that out, as, as a long range planner, and I think that my friends in the fire department will support me on this, that we need to be looking at, especially if this comes to more, more than one thing being there, we're gonna need more than one way in and out of these developments anyway, so I'm, I'm not even, I, I think I would be in favor of doing the, doing the fifty foot easement, and then if there's another way to get in, great, we've already, we've already got a second egress point put together with that, that fifty foot easement anyway.
So do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I agree with it in principle, I just, I think that if you wanted to do it with the easement that, that exists here, then we can still do future, more access for.
I hear you, and here's what we need to do, Dustin, I need to get you, me, we, we all need to get in a room, we all need to get in a room together with, with Ted and Jim, he's not here anymore, but Jim, and we need to get them in there together to, I, I don't want to do something tonight, I'm with you.
Yeah.
But I just sprung this on him, because we just went over it today, and in my mind, I, I think a little bit different, I don't want to give something in the future, that's something that he was always honest about, if we don't have to, you know, I mean, I don't want to give anything away, but I also want to make the landowners happy, because the main thing is, we, we want these people to develop, that's period in the story, you know, I know you are, and that's why, I still, the reason why I'm asking table, I think, is because I want to make sure he's comfortable with it, I don't want to do anything that a landowner feels like we did something sinister to, and he doesn't feel that way, but he wants, I want, I want him to make sure clearly he knows the direction of what we're trying to do. Does that make sense?
I agree, if we table it, and then you guys get it all ironed out, we don't have to worry about it and no discussion.
Right, does that, does that sound fair to everybody?
Sure.
Are you happy, Dustin?
Yeah.
You don't seem happy.
Anything that, anything that potentially makes sure that there's more access for developable land, I'm good with.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to do, I just want to make you happy, Dustin.
Favorite.
I got a motion to table.
Second.
I got a motion to table, I got a second.
Second.
Roll call vote starts, I got a motion by Robinson, a second by Ballhorn to table, number thirteen. That's okay, roll call start with Vice Mayor Cronister, yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
So are we getting to go to twenty-six?
Now, let's go to twenty-six, Bob, twenty-six in South Chisfair, I can't, discuss it. Discussion consideration possible action to grant access agreement within the former, within the former performing road, R O W.
Make a motion to table.
I got a motion to table.
That's it.
I got a second by Ryder, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, all right, now, go back to fourteen. Discussion consideration possible action to approve resolution, resolution City Council El Reno, Oklahoma to approve retention to attorneys to address opioid epidemic and allow mayor to sign all documents associated thereto. Basically, we've been approached by several people, we've met with them, is that right, Mr. Fraser?
Correct, we were approached by a law firm who wanted to include us in this litigation, it does not cost the city anything, and essentially, if we win, we receive some portion of those proceeds, and if we lose, it doesn't cost us anything, so, win-win.
Is there anything, if it, if the suit is won, that the money is flagged for certain things?
I, I have a, I have a contract, but I have to get into the details, I just know that it's split up between all the participants in the lawsuit.
Yeah, and to answer your question, yeah, like he's saying, the, the money we split up, it'd still be our decision to decide on what we want to do with that, and what we've done in the past, something like that would be more like a seizure, I would consider like more like a seizure type fund, type deal, we'd probably do something to do with the police or prevention, or something to do with, with, you know, something like that, and we would decide to do that, this council would decide to do that, does that make sense? But like Mr. Fraser said, the contract, when the contract comes in and where the money is distributed, they'll distribute a lump sum based on all of the division of that, and your portion of that, and then that portion goes to you, and, and then we decide what we want to do. Yes, yeah, but in the past, Ken, we've done that, more for seizures, I know you're smiling now, because you like, you like the way I'm talking now, don't you? Marcia doesn't, but you, but we have done it in the past, if it's done, something like that, that we've done it towards that direction, law enforcement, is that correct?
Education.
Educational.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, second, roll call vote start with Cronister. Yes. Yep.
Councilman Baller?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, number fifteen, discussion consideration possible action to approve final payment in amount of fifty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty cents to Young Contracting, project number K oh three bridge replacement, North Performing Road, and activate, and activate maintenance bond.
Motion approved, per authority.
I got a motion per authority from Robinson, second from Ballhorn, roll call start, roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, sixteen, discussion consideration possible action to approve ordinance number ninety-two two zero, and ordinance of Cityville Reno, amending code number one twenty, section one oh six, adding section nine, amending chapter title, same being the ordinance of Cityville Reno, regulating alarm and fire protection system with the Cityville Reno, providing for repeal and severability and declaring emergency. All right, Jonathan, get up here, what are you trying to do to me?
I just couple the ones I'm trying to do.
I know you are. Okay. This is, you got sixteen, you got seventeen, and you got eighteen.
Yeah, it kinda all links together.
Okay, I read through these. We're not doing any, we're not taxing, we're not doing any more than what we're doing right now, having them do, right? But we're doing it, explain to me.
Yeah, what we plan on doing is, right now, we wanna be a one-stop shop. Right now, for sprinklers and fire alarm plan reviews, we get our party contractor.
And that's that Carol?
And that is J.C. Carroll. He's a good guy. But what we like to do is make it a little easier for business owners to be able to come in, and they submit their fire alarm and sprinkler plan reviews straight to us. We're right here in town, we're able to review, get them out, be out there on the job faster, talk to some business, the builders, and they would like that as well. So, that is one part of it. You have another part that kinda gives fire system permit requirements, kinda going over some things like a fire, podcast, safety factor, which helps out, say, we got a lot of building going outside on the east side of town. It'll help us to make sure, when they're building these systems, that puts a little safety factor in there, so they don't have to come in and put a fire pump in later down the road. Just little things like that here and there that we plan on doing. I will say, one thing that is, I would say, is an additional, I'd like to look into our hazardous material storage. It's not saying everybody that's carrying a five-gallon gasoline container is gonna have to have that fee, annual fee. It's the ones that are like rock water, that they're carrying a lot of flammable materials, combustible dust, oxidizer corrosives, to where that takes a long time to go in there and do an inspection, make sure they have the right amount, make sure their ventilation's working correctly, sprinkler alarm and all that, to where charging them an annual fee, if they go over a certain amount, which is stated in the fire code, to where they go over a certain amount, at that point, we do have an annual permit fee, I go out there and inspect, and it's a longer process. But to make sure that our firefighters are safe, to make sure they're storing it correctly, and to make sure their employees are too. You'd be surprised on how many people don't know what they're actually storing, and how much they should be storing. So, that's kinda what we're looking at through a lot of these, so.
But a lot of this stuff is already, that's already in compliance, it's already set, everything else.
Nothing's gonna change, say, a guy's building a five-thousand-square-foot building, nothing's gonna change for him.
Nothing's gonna change, and that's what I don't wanna, I wanna make sure we're not detrimental to the buildings, and I know you do too.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that that's what it is, and I wanna make sure, after talking to you guys, I just wanna make sure that we're helping. I don't wanna close no doors to business.
Oh, no.
I wanna make sure everybody's doing the right and same thing.
Yeah.
I have a question.
But I wanna make sure that we're doing that. Go ahead.
In reading into the paragraph B of the system permit requirements, it states that the plans must be submitted to the city and approved prior to any work being performed as specified in subsection A of this section. So, my question is, is it appropriate to put a timeline for the approval time? So, somebody submits their plans, is it okay to put in, you know, whatever time is an appropriate time?
I definitely understand that, but we kinda come into a problem is there, sometimes we have great plans that we don't have to do much on. But then sometimes, there's a lot of different issues we have to go back and forth. And so, usually, say if somebody comes and brings something into our office, I can get back on it within, let's say, two or three days, probably that day. And I usually can type back, but I can say I've had a project going on right now, I send them a response, and I haven't heard anything for two weeks.
Well, and I think that's what I'm asking, even if it wasn't an approval, but a response to the submitted plans within a certain timeframe.
I mean, we could do something like that. I mean, it's not gonna really hold our hands, but I don't, I don't know. It depends on what we might run into on that too. I mean, we always have a quick response. I mean, I'd say within, I'd say max is a week, but sometimes we might have to ask for hydraulic calculations on water flows. So, sometimes that might take longer than, say, if we put two weeks on there.
Let's stop right there. And the reason why is because used to, we would give them a copy of our flows. Well, we're not in the business to do in their work. And the bottom line is, is that we need them to show us kinda what their flow deals are, based on their calculations, and we can check that, is that right?
Yeah.
And I think the main thing, what you're trying to do, I see what you're saying, Tracy, but really with the other inspectors, and the way we've been kinda running things, Dustin, don't you agree? That everything's been going a lot smoother back there.
It's getting smoother, certainly.
Wow, okay. So, we're doing good back there. And the bottom line is, is that they gotta have a timeline in there, Tracy, but they gotta have the ability to adapt that to different people that draw a different set of plans up. I mean, it's just like, Timmy can tell you, when you're building buildings, I'm just making this up to you, but if you go from Mueller, they kinda know what you all want. They know L Reno specs, they know kinda what they're doing, they go from there, is that correct?
That's true.
But if you get something from like Texas or Butler, I'm making that up too.
Yep.
I'm not down on any company, but they come in here, they don't sell a lot of buildings around here, well, they don't have the same-
Snow load or-
Snow load, or J-bolt pattern, or whatever else, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, they might not include that in the plans, so then they gotta send it back to them.
So, I also have a question about, in the code, is it okay to list the state ordinances that reflect what you're talking about?
So, state ordinances, so the state has adopted, the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission has adopted the state minimum standard, which was what we have adopted. And what I'm referring to right here is sections of the International Fire Code.
Okay.
So, it's actually not a state ordinance, just actually what the city has adopted and the state has adopted.
But we've adopted those.
It is a statement.
It is a statement. It's our codes, what we adopted, what we choose to do, does that make sense?
Right.
Like, we have different, there's different ones, like even if, like you do electrical or whatever else, right?
And they're already in, they're already in the code, but already in different areas, like, say, hey, this is, we-
Okay.
So, we've adopted the two thousand-
So, those codes are reflected-
Yes.
In the main code, but just not restated here.
Just not what you're seeing here, yes.
Okay.
Now, and if we have a problem with any of this stuff, and there's some complaints, or there's something that we're not doing, and I asked Jonathan, because every time we make changes like that, people think, well, I don't do that in Oklahoma City. Yeah, you do, you do. Yeah, I don't do that in UConn. Yes, you do. I mean, we're doing the same thing, we're trying to get standardized with everybody, does that make sense? And everybody else is doing the same thing. But we can always change and adapt, if there's something that doesn't make sense to us, or to Jonathan, or to them. You know, does that make sense? I mean, I'm not against, if something, bring it back two weeks, month, a year later, let's look at it.
So, what does it mean by the relocation of more than five appliances in any structure?
So, what, that kinda helps us out to where, say if you have six sprinklers in here. I could ask for plans on if one head was changed, but I'm trying to do it to where, hey, we don't wanna see every single plans. We wanna say, if you guys add more than five heads, we need to see the calculations, make sure that's not gonna mess with the sprinkler.
Okay.
So, I'm not getting all the small, small plans. I can go out there and check them out.
And, Councilwoman, that's something that we've ready to do with some of our older properties, where they're starting to separate and develop those. They come in and may not want to change the configuration of the sprinkler system, which makes it ineffective.
Okay.
So, but if it's just one, all you gotta do is show us that it's gonna meet the code, but if it's more than that, we're trying to give them some leeway there, so they don't have to do as much if it's a very minor.
Okay.
And some of this will affect those, I mean, this is gonna affect these downtown buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, but it's gonna affect them anyway, doesn't matter, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
If they move anything.
Yeah.
But if they, but if they don't have it, if they're not over, what is it, the twelve-thousand feet?
Well, it kinda goes a lot of different deals, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it won't affect them, okay.
Yeah, this won't affect anything, but this is all the same what we've been doing. I just wanted to put something in there, kinda back.
Cleans it up.
Cleans it up.
Motion for approval?
Second.
I got a motion for approval, a second. Roll call vote start with, this is only number-
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen, I got a motion, a second approval. Roll call start with Tracy.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yeah.
Make a motion to declare emergency.
Got a motion to declare emergency, second. Roll call, start with Cronister.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Councilman Cronister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, number seventeen, discussion consideration possible action, ordinance number ninety-two, ninety-one, twenty-nine, ordinance, City of Reno, Oklahoma, amending code, chapter one eighty-nine, article two, section one eighty-nine-three, same being the ordinance to City of Reno, regulating fire prevention with the City of Reno limits, providing for repeal and severability, declaring emergency.
Motion approved.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Make a motion to declare emergency.
Got a motion to declare emergency, got a second by Cronister. Roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number eighteen, discussion consideration possible action, approval ordinance number nine-two-two-two-two, an ordinance to City of Reno, Oklahoma, there, City amending chapter one eighty-nine, code of City of Reno, hereafter adopting the most recent edition of Fire Code pursuant to the Regulation of State of Oklahoma Uniform Building Code, Commissioner Regulations, recovering and safeguards for the life and property from fire or explosion hazards, handling the use conditions, hazard building and premises of City of Reno, providing for assurances for permits, collections, fees, therefore repealing the ordinance, therefore part of ordinances of conflict, and providing for severability and declaring emergency.
Could you read that again? I didn't-
I'm not reading it.
I'm motion-
I'm not gonna read that again. I got a motion, a second, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
I guess you need emergency.
Motion for emergency.
Got a motion for a motion, thank you, Bob. Got a second by Robinson? Huh?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Alright. Roll call start with, you're running your mouth over there. I called it. Roll call vote start with Cronister, yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number nineteen, discussion consideration possible action to award project number K nine, C D B G drainage three, for London into Sunset, Delada, Chairman and Mayor to sign all documents associated thereto.
Per authority.
I got per authority. Yes, Marcia, I saw you sneak up there, talking about signage earlier, what do you two got going on?
Sorry, it's only a dollar nineteen cents, but on the box engineering letter, we approved three fifty thousand eight seventy-nine thirty, and the actual bid's three fifty eight eighty-four nine in the authority. In the authority, we also approved the two seventy-two, which was right, and that's the part that will be paid on the authority. So, I just wanna make sure that we get this part, or the council part, that's gonna go in the general, the three fifty thousand eight eighty-four nine.
Eight eighty.
Forty-nine. It's only a dollar nineteen difference, since that's a fee.
Marcia, it's important. It is important. Three fifty, eight eighty-nine.
Eight eighty-four nine.
Eight eighty-four nine.
Eight?
Three fifty, eight eighty-four nine.
Eight eighty.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
That's my motion.
So, Timmy makes a motion.
My motion?
Timmy makes a motion to approve Marcia in the audience.
I'll second it.
Of three hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and forty-nine cents. Not forgetting the correction of the one dollar and whatever cent.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, roll call vote. Okay. Tracy?
Yes.
You gonna affirm her motion? Okay.
Second.
Marcia's the third vote up here, I guess. Second, roll call vote start with Cronister, yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor White?
Oh, yeah. Number twenty, discussion consideration possible action, project number K twelve, eight inch, gravity sear replacement, S E E R.
Yeah, sear.
Replacement between sunset, per authority?
Per authority.
I got a motion, per authority?
Second.
Marcia, is this good?
Oh, yeah. That's the only one she has, a dollar twenty-nine on the other one. I got a motion.
He seconded it.
Okay, got a motion by Ballhorn, a second by Cronister. Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Twenty-one, discussion consideration possible action to accept proposal from equipment being used for project number K fourteen, upgrade lift stations for Lake El Reno RV Park, Crimson Lake Estates addition, and allow Chairman and Mayor to sign all documents associated thereto. Per authority? Got a motion per authority, second by Cronister. Roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yep.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number twenty-two, discussion consideration possible action to enter agreement, contract for aviation fuel with ASAP Energy. Per authority? Per authority from Ballhorn, second by Ryder. Roll call start with Cronister, yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number twenty-three, discussion consideration possible action on license application by McGee Taxi Service LLC to operate tax cab within the City of Reno limits. Hey, there she is, there's my girl.
My name is Georgia McGee, and I'm a member of the Shinerapoe Tribes, and I did get my LLC, and I've also talked to our chief executive officer out at Lucky Star. And I think, because we know it's growing, and we're getting a lot more people, and I plan to expand later on, but I think it's a service that we really need. We have a lot of elderly people that need to go to their doctor's appointments, and people aren't here to take them. And I've chosen some pretty reasonable flat rates, because we're not a big city. We used to have a taxi cab years ago that did zones, and I don't think that will work right now. I think this is the easiest way. And I'm gonna set up with wholesale payments to set credit cards. I don't wanna do like an app, because it doesn't work that well here in El Reno, you know? And I did talk, oh, bringing up Lucky Star, and you were talking about the Halliburton, talking to the hotels. They wanna set up a deal with the hotels and for visitors coming into El Reno, that Lucky Star will pay for their rides out to the casino and back. So, that works out good for me, and I think that works out really good for El Reno too.
Well, we're excited, and you and I've talked about it, and I-
I have been so excited about it.
We've been talking about it, she's like, well, come on, Matt, I gotta get, I said, get in here, and I'm proud of you, I'm happy, I think it's a great need, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Kida.
And you will take people anywhere, though, correct?
Oh, yeah. I was gonna be open, my hours I'm thinking about doing are one-to-one, but if you need to make it like a ride, a pre-arranged ride, I don't have any problem with it. I won't be open on Sunday, I gotta go to church.
But I mean, as far as you'll go to the city, the airport, wherever.
I've got, I've got Oklahoma City one-way twenty-three, that's tax included. I've got Lucky Star eleven dollars, tax included. Anywhere in El Reno, six dollars, tax included. And I do free quotes for Yukon, Mustang, Union City, Minko, and Chickasha. Any extra riders will be two dollars.
You need to buy an ad from that guy right there. Okay, well, thank you very much, we're happy for you. Absolutely. I got a motion, a second, roll call vote start with Cronister, yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yep.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Absolutely.
Free rides.
Alright, twenty-four, why did y'all get on agenda so, boy, they put you all, made you suffer through the whole thing, didn't they? God, gum. I'm glad they did that, punished you guys a little bit. Yeah, I do, doesn't do any good, she'll yell at you later. Discuss, number twenty-four, discussion consideration possible action to approve a lease agreement between the El Reno Community Theater and the Center Theater. Hey, we got us a deal. We got a deal for you guys. You know, I think, and I guess towards the election, we kinda had our little deal up, but I like to say in public, to the back of the field, get them on, kinda stab them a little bit. We didn't know, we didn't know anything about there not being a, you know, agreement between the city, that was Dan Galloway, that was the city manager, he has authority to do that, he has authority to enter that, you know, we didn't, I didn't know anything about, you know, some of the problems. And I think there was problems. I think there was a misunderstanding from both different groups, I think there was a misunderstanding from what the use needed to be, how it needs to work. But we've had a couple meetings, they've been great meetings, and I think it's one of those things, what we came to you today is, me being mayor, and a group from the community theater group, troop, I feel like we can enter an agreement, just like we do with all the other groups, as far as the grass car, the rodeo agreement, whatever else we do, we do it all over. But let's let these folks take this deal, and let's do it for a year, we'll see how it works. There's gonna be some bugs that they're gonna have to work out, on both ends, I think, we feel like. But they feel like that they can run it on their side of it, and they can make it work as far as their community theaters that they have. But they also wanna continue, and that was part of the deal, was to continue the same process as far as the movies that we do, and all the other stuff that they continue to do, the Backwoods bunch, everything else, so no one's really gonna be affected. There might be a little bit changes on who does some of the concessions, but there's really no way else to do it. So, we're gonna try it this way and let it do it, but we feel like it's, we're presenting this to you guys, I'm kind of championing it. I think it's a good deal, I think it's a good thing for the community. If everybody does their end of the bargain, which I don't see neither one of us doing at this point in time, I think we'll have to work through it. Because I think there's a lot of misconceptions that we didn't, we never said that or did that, we didn't know anything about it, and they assumed that. Well, they didn't, they were wrong to come not ask us, or anybody on the board. So, it'll open up connections between us, so we can understand what's going on with them, what their needs are, what our needs are, and it gets us an operator that can, someone can run that movie theater down there, and do some potential things. And we've even set some standards, Roger, you know, where we were pretty happy with some of the Grinch setup, the different events, the different stuff we did on Facebook, and different things that we did. So, this will help us do that, and they wanna continue doing that on. I mean, who better to dress up a Grinch than, I was gonna say Roger, but not Roger. But they, they're in that stuff. So, through the meetings, we feel good about it, we feel great about it, it's a great partnership, we feel good about it. I encourage you, I hope you vote for it, and I think it's, let's try this for a year, see if it works. If not, then we'll be the sad clown, not the happy face, but I don't see that happening, so. Are you all encouraged by it?
Yeah.
I think we're all, we're all on the same page, and I think we got it all worked out, is that right? Okay. So, I make a motion, I make a motion that we go in, we do the agreement with the El Reno Community Theater, and let them run the theater for a year, let's see what happens.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, roll call vote start with Cronister, yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, just like that.
Mr. Mayor, that existing performance schedule also includes Burger Day and Veterans Day programs.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you pointed out, but I mean, every event we've ever done, that we went through the list and everything else. So, we might get some calls, but if they had some things that we, we're gonna cater to those people, is that right, Roger?
They have a priority use.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Number twenty-seven, presentation of financial reports. Marcia, have we got a dollar twenty-seven in the bank? Okay.
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, well, I got everything all marked up. Discussion argument regarding municipal search group, O-MAG, coming to February, reg, meaning to implement regulation program for the council. Do we have to go step through a bunch of deals again?
If you want ten thousand dollar rebate, yeah.
Well, let's talk about this for a minute. I know it was painful, and if you all skip out on this, Robinson, or Cronister.
I probably won't be here.
I'm pointing to you two especially. I will tell you, we did this, and we used that money, Tracy, talk about using money to earmark it. You know what we did with that money?
No.
No.
We took that money, we took that money, and after I got it, I was, we made it to go to the, no, we, no, we gave it to the employees for the employee appreciation deal, and they are doing a great job with that. So they gave, we gave away some TVs to employees, they did a bowling alley, they got all these different events planned, so we kind of suffered through the whole thing, but the ten thousand dollars goes to all of our employees to the different events they have throughout the year that they get to go on picnics or whatever else, is that right, Marcia?
Yes, we appreciate that.
Well, I'll be there then.
See there? So it was fun, did you like it, Mark? You're a terrible bowler, but anyway, yes. Yeah, and so it's fun, and we had, and we had a great participation on a lot of those events, don't you all think? We got a golf tournament planned, some things like that, so it's good what the employees come up with, but that ten thousand dollars, I felt like it was good that we gave it back to them, and I knew that you all wouldn't care, and it was a line item, and it was when I was acting as mayor or something.
I can probably get lunch out of Mark or Darren or somebody.
I doubt that will happen, all right. Now. Now, presentation, Marcia, everything okay with the money? Sales tax is down again. Okay. All right, reports. What's your name? Cronister.
I got none of them.
JT, don't want anything, what about you, Rob? Bob?
Jones Road.
Yeah. What about it?
Well, I got people wanting it open, wanting it closed, and I don't know.
Well, let me tell you what we're doing, and then we can still make that determination, it can be open, we can do whatever, just whatever you all decide to do. Right now, what we did was, we made the oilfield company fix Jones Road up so that they would have access and not come in off Performance Road and disturb those houses.
Correct.
Now, we can't stop these people from drilling, but we can, we can direct them to different roads. They are going to fix Jones Road when they get done. Now, at that point in time, Jeff, it'll be, they're putting all new tin horns in that one, that one slough that's always been flooded, everything else, you know, I think that's just something, I think half the neighborhood wants it open, some of the neighborhood wants it closed, I think there's just some kids and stuff that used to go out there party forty years ago, but I think the main thing is, is that right now, we're just concentrating on the oilfield traffic, is that correct, Jeff?
That's what it's for, right.
Right now. So why don't we bring it up after they get done drilling, and we can decide what you all want to do, and we can, you know, if the neighbors want it open, they want it closed, you know, once again, we want to make everybody happy, we got to see if it's functional. It wasn't, it was a kind of, and Ken will have to jump in there, and I don't think we've looked at it a long time, but you've had that road closed since the nineties.
Oh, yeah.
And that's just something that we're going to have to kind of, to look at and have a study done, and why we did that, it's just kind of one of those areas that there was just a hotspot at that time, is that right, Ken?
Well, and I don't know that the questions that I'm being asked are to leave it open, as much as, obviously, if it's locked, the fire and police will have a key, obviously, surely.
They do. Well, it's not an agenda, it's discussion.
I'm just discussing.
It's under, it's under city council members, we're not taking the item, we're not taking issue, okay.
No, 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 I just.
The answer is, I, we don't have.
We don't know yet.
Let me answer your question.
There we go. We'll just leave it at that tonight.
I don't know. It's, right now, it's closed because of the oilfield, because of what it was back in the nineties. It's been opened and functional now because of oilfield. If you want to bring it back and make an agenda item at that time and discuss it, I'm open to that, does that make sense?
No, that's.
It's not formally closed, they just gated it.
No, it, it's been.
Yes.
No.
Oh, no, it's not been formally closed, I'm sorry, we looked that up, you and I looked that up, that's right, yeah. Yeah, it's not been formally closed, it's been gated, because we looked that up from that guy. Okay, anything else? Okay. Jeremy, you got anything? Or still in council?
I think we're still in council.
Go ahead, Timmy, you got anything? Tracy? Wow, okay, now Jeremy, go ahead.
Well, I would like to thank all of the individuals that I've met in the community. It's been a great experience, a great learning experience, the positives and the negatives have been great learning experiences, and I think that's how you learn and move forward. So anyway, thank you all that have taken the time to allow me to get to know you, organizations, Main Street Chamber of Commerce, different organizations like that. And I appreciate the council members for giving me the opportunity to grow, and I wish the city and the council, you know, great luck moving forward and building on the community and building Reno into their vision of what Reno can be, which I think they all have grand, great visions,